Okay. Everybody, I'd like to call it a order, the town of McAllen meeting in town council for June 12, 2023, if you can join us all in the pledge allegiance.
The United States of America and to the very thought like for which stands one nation under God individual recovery and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. As we start all meetings, how we conduct them, we'll work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice, but may disagree. We will do so with civility and respect because in the end, we're all neighbors. A few announcements, yoga in the park returns June 17 through September 2. Jack, that's good to know for you. Wallpark to close for construction on June 19 for the remainder of the season. We have a drive in movie on June 17th. So we know what movie it is. It is Back to the Future. Okay. And then the heritage is having historic structures of North Park lecture on June 15. Does anyone else on council have any announcements to go to the order? Okay. Very good. If there's anybody moving on here. Does anyone here want to make any public comments on any of the agenda items? If you do, please approach the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
President, I have a a comment from one of my constituents, if I may read it.
Please.
This is from Darla Rocco. Eight, four, seven, five post road regarding the open burning ordinance we'll be discussing tonight. She says, all the fire burning should be banned in McCandless as it is a health hazard for everyone and pollution issue for the environment. With the recent Canadian wildfires and pollution, our area was in code orange for code orange air alert for three days. This was a very unhealthy situation for the elderly. Anyone with a lung condition or asthma and young children. Even healthy individuals complained of burning eyes and headaches. The burning of wood releases organic chemicals that we breathe into our lungs and very small, small particles that can enter into the bloodstream and cause short and long term health issues. This past Saturday night, my neighborhood experienced an overwhelming smell of smoke from someone's backyard fire. We were unable to enjoy sitting out on a cool evening in our backyard or front porch. After just a few minutes in the smoky environment, our hair and clothing were inundated with a nauseating smell. Additionally, Western Pennsylvania is in a moderate drought situation with approximately 20 days of no rain. The state parks have recently banned campfires. As a 30 year resident of the town of McCandless, I feel that much more can be done for our health and safety. We need to step up and ban all fires, whether they be contained or open. Thank you, Darla Rocco.
Somebody else on council have any? And seeing none here, those are simple. Okay, I'm moving on. The meeting minutes from the May 22 meeting were included in our packet. Does anybody have any revisions before we move to improvements? Here and now, floor is open for motion to approve needing.
I make a motion to approve minutes of May 27.
Second, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, next up, report to the committees, the public safety committee. Dr. Rafa, can you run us through that?
Yes, thank you. You'll see the chief's report is in the your packet. Looks as though there were a lot of the UI setups this month. And a little bit of so a couple officers took place with the torch run. I had the pleasure of meeting two of those young men. And they were talking all about how they were running with this porch. I don't know if they what it really meant, but they did a nice job and they were very excited about it. Is there anything you'd like to to add to anything that's on here?
Unless anyone has any questions, I will have it in front of you. There was an update. I don't know if you folks spotted picture of the dog. The dogs in training right now, maybe make mention of that. I believe Officer Davis goes in a week or two to begin training with them. Training, as usual, we had a visit by North Allegheny baseball team. Like you said, Doc, the torch run. All officers completed their annual firearms qualifications, annual mandatory and service training. And also in May, the Bigs and Blue program concluded the school year. So we were busy. I'll keep it short. Yes, ma'am.
How many participants in the Bigs and Blue program do you have?
So at the moment, we continue to try to recruit, but at the moment, we have three McCandless officers, myself being one of them. And two medics. Hopefully we'll grow the program each year, you know. It wasn't that big, so it is growing.
And how many of the younger people do you have then?
So each of us have, we are the bigs, each of us have a little that the school is able to pair us with. And you, 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 you're the big and little with each other for the entirety of the school year and beyond. I believe they age out of it after maybe. Don't quote me, but I believe that in the major fifth grade. So you follow them for two or three years and then they can they pair you with another one.
That's great program. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, folks?
Thank you.
Okay.
The fire marshal report is in your packet. It's pretty much in order with pretty much last month's. I didn't see anything new. So do you want to comment on anything?
I don't have anything to add at this time. So if anybody has any questions.
Maybe you could speak to the neighbor of Trish with the new ordinance.
Well, I believe that's on the agenda at the end, right? I mean, okay. Yeah, I think that's sort of be up for discussion for for you all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Building permits, they're in your packet. Nothing unusual. Quite a lot of permits this month. Any questions about anything? Everybody to the construction. Okay. Moving on to the code enforcement, it's also in your packet. Pretty much the same thing as it was last month. Any questions? No.
I just wanted to make a comment. I had a constituent complain about the neighbor's yard justified, and Alex went up and investigated, and he took care of it immediately. And the neighborhood is very happy. So when you give kudos to Alex on that.
Good. Thank you so much for that. Liaison reports, personnel board, Carolyn.
We didn't have a meeting in May. We are going to have our next meeting next week on Wednesday, the 21st of June. So nothing to report on that.
Thank you. Volunteer steering committee, Mrs. Eisenwright.
We didn't have a meeting either. Our next meeting is in July.
Okay. Any public comment on the public safety report? Council. That includes my reports.
I will run with the report of facilities management since Mr. Singer's not with us this evening. First up, the public work activity report. If anybody has anything to put in here.
Hello. Just a few quick things. June 19. We are starting Walpark field renovations and also the Lorraine Rogers playground area will be closed for four weeks, possibly six weeks. We're installing a large sandbox picnic tables, benches, some landscaping over there to finish that off. July 17, the paving program is scheduled to start. Right now, we believe we're starting with Grubbs Road. We're going to give everyone probably three weeks notice before we start. We have a, I think the utility and gas company is still finishing up on some of the roads we have planned. So the original agreement with the water and gas company is they would be done by the end of this month. If that's the case, there may be adjustments, but as of right now, Grubbs Road will be first on the list. And then the other thing is in May, we started a basically a storm a detention pond crew. All they do all day is cut. So I think we're up to about 17 ponds right now. The rest of them are going to be a lot more work, working with gateway engineers right now to try and do as much in house as we can, but but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that started.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else have anything to count? Very good. Next up liaison, we have the stop sign ordinance discussion. Do you want to do that here?
Yeah, we can do that. The we gave you guys a quick memo just to explain then the state of Pennsylvania to make a stop sign fully legal and enforceable by the police department that we have to pass an ordinance. So every year, a few years, we try to clean up anything that we've had to put out there or anything that we plan to put out there. So there's a couple intersections that DPW, the Department of Public Works recently identified and checked with gateway engineering on the proper placement of stop signs. So we just wanted to give the head nod that we were going to put together that ordinance with solicitor Corbin. Last one we did was 2017. Or, you know, we haven't had a lot of new developments, so it happens whenever there's usually after a new development comes in. This doesn't need to be worked with pendant. I threw that on there just to explain the trap replacement of stop signs and also that we need an ordinance to enforce them. So we're cleaning something up. This is essentially a cleanup, something we should probably do, you know, every two to three years or every time we put in a new stop sign.
So you're looking for just head nods.
Just to put together the ordinance, you put the ordinance together.
Alrighty, next, the liaison reports. Katie, would you want to run us through the environmental advisory?
There's a advisory committee here for town council. There's one over at the library, I believe. And we just want to mirror that same thing at the EAC. We want to be able to have a student advisor that'll help us with our connections with the school.
Recently, the VAC submitted a event request for this. We had talked recently about having that handled administratively. So just wanted to let council know about that process and that the EAC was going to go forward with the student environmental advisory committee member. Because they do have, they have had people that have shown interest in doing things just under the EAC versus the junior council program.
Does that position need to be approved by council or the AAC select out of applicants?
Well, I would send in the opinion, I think Steve brought this up, we don't need to be approving everybody. That if we basically have just an agreement that you can apply these people to these positions.
Okay.
So the EAC would interview, if there's multiple candidates, EAC would interview correct these students and pick them pick one, correct? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think it's a good plan because they have a lot of kids that are involved and very passionate.
Nice for a kid's resume too.
And we think it'll help us with our environmental clinics.
And the, you know, oh, yeah. That last one, we must have had at least, that I talked to at least. And they were, they were doing, they were just wanting to be there. They were there themselves. They weren't with the kids. They just came by themselves. So I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
That's all around, I'm saying. Okay, very good. Anything else about EA theme, Mr. Casey?
No, not, not at just.
Okay. Dr. Rafa, it looked like no, there was no tech meeting. Do you have anything to add?
We did have a technology.
Okay.
It was on Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Okay, sorry, that was the agenda, but that part was written before we had the meeting, so.
But in any event, we had our meet, our meeting and that there were a lot of things that was discussed about things that have been done and things that still are in the works of being done, but are being delayed because of various reasons. As far as update on the plate smart, the license plate readers. I know that Chi-Pac and Shunamit, they're in the process of getting some quotes on that. So that we can get those readers up and going. They want to have those connected also with the parks, right?
Correct.
Other things were with the new software as far as the finance package and some of those things. And there's some things that have to be put in place before we can do this. And then later on, we are going to, I'll turn it over Brian over new business. We'd like to make a proposal, and this is coming from the technology committee. The rest is in your packet.
Any questions for Dr. Ron? And then no meeting for the stormwater management. Then is there anyone here in the public that wants to make a comment on any facilities management items? If you do, please come to the microphone, name and address. See. Okay, next up was the services. Ms. Clonan, can you walk us?
Thank you. We will start with the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, Mr. Casey.
It's in your packet. We feel like nothing to report.
Further questions, moving on to the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. The May meeting notes minutes are in your packet. I do want to thank them for a great open house event that was hosted, lead a wonderful time. I think it was good response from the public and everyone who took the time to visit. And also to let everybody know that our next meeting is Tuesday, June 20, 6:00 PM. And if there's any questions.
Just how is the grant affecting them now? They could use some monies.
And direct to, I don't know exactly where it's going yet. Yeah.
Just.
I'm gonna, I can ask that, though. I can make sure that comes up on Tuesday.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
There hundred thousand plus a hedge fund. Is that, is there any one time things that have done that have caused that in the first five months?
There's, that's, there's been a real concerted effort with getting the subscriptions and the, and the capital and the campaign. So they, they changed the, so one part of the year, they put out word to one feeder pattern like McCandless for subscription and then the other part of the year for donations. And then they flip flop that. So there's been a lot more marketing of that and getting word out and that's helped quite a bit. But I think we are still, and Ms. Caliendo is here that could talk to this as well. We're still running that deficit on every call. That is not going away anytime soon. The fact that we're still not making, not we, the McCand, the ambulance authority is still not covering their cost to provide service at this time.
And I would highlight every ambulance service is in that same issue.
There's no further comment, any comment from the public on? If you, yeah, if you, that's okay.
I'm Rosha Cammingando, one of our two night Abby and I'm chair of the ambulance authority. Dr. Robert, you had mentioned something about a grant, which specific grant were you?
The one from one new rep.
From our margin.
Oh, okay.
Has that been received?
I don't believe that's yet been received. We have been very diligent in applying for grants this year. In fact, the latest one was for $50,000 of which we need to replace our garage doors. So that's what we're going to be using that for. We had a, in addition to our subscription, we had a capital campaign and we received tremendous support from our community, I believe $140,000. It was, it was just mind boggling and, and very grateful that we received that much money. And so we were very happy for that. And operationally, we're doing okay. But we just bought a $250,000 ambulance with $100,000 to help stock it. So on our capital side, obviously, we're not, we're still not meeting, meeting all the needs. So hopefully that answered your questions.
Yes, yes. Well, you don't have the money, you can't do anything with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's no further questions. Move on to the Northland Public Library Authority. Mr. Singer's not here, but there were several notes in the packet. Any questions or comments? Any public comment on services committee? And then if there's nothing from council, move on to our business.
Okay, we have a couple ordinances here that have come in front of us before. We've seen these, so they should go first. They should be quick. The first one is the Knox box. Does anyone, I guess Jeff, we might as well stay up here to ask. Answer any questions? We've seen him before, but so the first one is to revise our Knox box ordinance. So anybody have any questions for Jeff? Does anyone need to repeat up or summarize? Okay, okay. If there's no questions, the floor is open for a motion. Okay, Mary Ann.
A motion to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number 1535, amending part 15 of the town code of ordinances, fire prevention code. By inserting a new article 1511 titled Knox box, Knox box to require certain structures to have a key lock, key lock box installed on the exterior of the structure for safety purposes and to provide fines and penalties for violations thereof.
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the open fire and burning regulations. Did anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, we had that.
So Mr. Casey had asked me about kind of comment on that. So kind of give you an idea of what's been happening. Since the weather has warmed up and we, it seems like summer's kicked off a little early for us here in Pittsburgh. Usually doesn't kick off till late May, but the fire companies have been dispatched to what I would consider from last year, a little more. We'll call it, say calls for open burning. Lot of times there are smoke investigation or somebody sees fire, doesn't know if something's on fire. And then, of course, the fire companies are dispatched, so they show up, find out it's an open burn. Not all of them are illegal, probably legal. You know, talking with fire companies have kind of addressed the, what the requirements are. So we are cracking down on illegal open burning. As a matter of fact, less than two weeks ago, I just issued a citation for an open fire, illegal open fire. That's probably about a quarter mile from McDonald's where somebody was burning. A lot of stuff they probably shouldn't have been burning. So you know, the biggest key I think is educating our residents. The, if you guys had saw the on the fire side, the one that went out, Mcmail in, in April. At the end of April, I did a big article on open burning. Again, just letting everybody know kind of what the requirements are to, to do it. I've kind of instructed the fire chiefs to let their officers know when they do respond, especially after hours when I'm not around. Then if they come across somebody open burning, explain to them if they're, they're not doing it right, explain to them what they need to do and extinguish the fire. You know, just put it out. Told them to use their discretion, especially with people who have health concerns. It was something that was very big in the community that I used to work for, but we were really on top of each other compared to out here. So again, we, we definitely are getting the calls, but we are, again, educating people, cracking down, but remember ultimately you as elected officials are the ones that set those, those rules and regulations. I do not. I'm just the enforcement side.
Couple, two quick questions. When, when you said you get these calls, are these through the 911 system that, and then they go directly to the fire department? Or do they go to our police or both?
Nine times out of 10, it comes through 911. Every once in a while, if it's during the day, somebody my car office and then it usually gets passed down to me and then I go out and check it out. And again, it's it's really just about educating the people, like what you, what can you burn? Really, it's a, it's got to be a clean fuel. It can't be anything that's going to smoke a lot. And that's, that's usually what I tell them. If you can see the smoke in the air, you're probably not burning correctly. So.
And a second question. The situation that, you know, one of our residents brought up is we, we had an unusual situation with the Canadian wildfire smoke in our area. Is there do our officers or these fire personnel have the leeway to say, well, it's not a good idea today, please put it out? Or, or is it, you know, the law is the law?
They do. No, actually they do. So in the ordinance itself. See, it does mention, so as a fire marshal, if we do have, it talks about atmospheric conditions. If they're not conducive to burning, which obviously, one, it's been extremely dry. So that's a fire hazard in itself, but then, yes, when the, you know, we had the code red or code orange, whatever.
Yeah.
Orange, we put together, it's yellow. I don't know. But anyways, yeah, it's one of those ones where I can say, you know what, even if Allegheny County wasn't doing it, maybe, maybe just naturally McCandless, it should, we shouldn't be burning. That's something that we can, we can enact and we can say, hey, nobody can burn right now except for, you know, obviously food consumption. Other than that, no open burning until such time. So yes, this, this would give us that.
Thank you.
Jeff, were we going to add to pictures?
We can add as many as you want. Yeah. And I hope to get on our website when that goes live that all these will be out there and then we can do a little bit better of explaining.
Do we have a newsletter that goes out this summer?
In print.
Yeah, we usually do one that will go out this summer because we usually do a digital one in the fall.
I'm just wondering, we shouldn't.
That could be, that could be a piece of it that this.
Because the more people know about it, because everybody doesn't know the website, I think it would be better.
Why don't we go live?
That's a great question. I'll refer that to Mr. O'Malley.
After we pass this?
Okay.
That's what we're asking.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the website.
Oh, the website?
Is that what you're referring to?
I have a drop date, but soon.
So the question I have is, can you, if someone still support the ordinance, knowing that this is going to be expanded upon, this happens.
Yeah, that's just examples.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean limited to.
Yeah, I'm happy to suggest this.
Yeah, I just didn't know because
maybe what needs to say is, but not limited to.
Yeah, sir.
This is examples.
Sure, they can't, it might not look exactly like that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Jeff's going to have all that information on the website and you can put pictures.
Right.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number 1536, amending part 15 of the town code of ordinances, fire prevention code. By inserting a new article 1503 entitled Open Fire and Burning Regulations, providing a definition of open burning to regulate open fires. Open fire and burning regulations, providing a definition of open burning to regulate open fires and open burning in the town and to provide fines and penalties for violations thereof.
I get.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, next up, Jeff, is the fire safety inspection. Anyone have specific questions? Okay, say none. Floor is open for motion.
I'll make a motion. To make a motion to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number 1537, amending part 15 of the town code of ordinances, fire prevention code. By inserting a new article 1505 entitled Fire Safety Inspections to require fire safety inspections of all commercial properties to authorize inspection fees and inspection reports and to provide fines and penalties for violations thereof. Second.
Carolyn online. Everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the last one on Jeff's list, the stores fittings. Anybody have questions? About that? No. So. There's the. So we have a state building code that has a plumbing part two. We have a county plumbing code. Do those require, do those specify what fittings are on a fire hydrant?
So yeah, and, and well, what it comes down to is municipality too, because. Some fire companies might use national standard threads, others will use what they call Pittsburgh's next. So it just really depends on those. That community as to what their hydrant connections, because it has to match up. With what the fire companies are using. So with, with the storage connections, they're a universal sexless coupling that. I mean, that's pretty much the standard nowadays in the fire service, so whether it's a McCandless fire company. Ross company, a pine company, they all use storage fittings now, so these, if, you know, we start getting these private hydrants in. They'll actually be able to all hook up to.
Any other questions for Jeff? Nope, okay, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified ordinance number fifteen thirty-eight. Amending part fifteen of the fire prevention code. By inserting a new article fifteen oh seven. Entitled store Z fittings. To acquire private hydrants to be outfitted with store Z fittings and to provide fines and penalties for violations thereof.
Second.
Second, we'll go to Carolyn. Everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Yep, thank you.
Thank you for your effort.
Putting all this together and I'm sure you get through.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
Um, new business discussion regarding the technology.
Dr. Rappa. Alludes to this earlier during our section on the tech committee. What I did, I, I wrote a little memo with the approval of the chair of the tech committee. But basically, the, the tech committee has kind of been hitting a point where they're saying, what, what's the big projects we have left? Because the last four years, they've done some awesome, amazing things. In getting this town moving forward on software for the administration, software for our police, software for our public works. And also improving our security and trying to get more production out of the technology that we do have. So they've taken on some big projects, they've offered a lot of help, there's a list here, just to kind of show off everything that they've added to. Town as an advisory committee. However, they're kind of hitting the point of, do they need to meet every single month and does it need to continue the way it is? Also, three of the committee members, their terms ended at the end of this month and they were not interested in reapplying. So the recommendation after. The chair talked to me and Dr. Rappa and also the whole tech committee was to. Suggested to town council to make an adjustment to this committee and adjusted to an ad hoc committee versus a. Full public committee meeting that is held monthly. This ad hoc meeting would have three members, two of the current members and. Whoever council decides to appoint as the third. And the council would continue to appoint the members to the committee and the committee would meet as needed. Three members, three. So that was their recommendation, put that together in a memo. Kathy and I wanted to share it with council, wasn't expecting action tonight. But wanted to let everybody know about that recommendation, let anyone think about it and ask any questions tonight if we want to have a discussion. And talk to our solicitor about what our options are. About making an adjustment to a committee like that that is set in the ordinance.
And, and I wish you know. The whole committee helped that. No, I'd have to agree with them, but I wanted to make sure that council and Brian did a nice job of doing that. That highlight the things that they have accomplished over the last, you know, three, four years. And it's quite a list. We're at the point right now where we'd have to get the new software up and going, get people trained, we have to do all those types of things. The only thing we would have left to do, and we talked about that, would be maybe. Getting our mainframe over there enclosed with some air conditioning and they make a chest free. Those types of things, if we do any renovations. You know, like security cameras or changing the cameras and mirrors so we can watch people behind as well. Those types of things, we can kind of do that with a consultant and get some advice from the ad hoc committee. So we didn't feel there was anything pressing that we would. Need the attention of the full committee meeting every single. Lot of this time.
Any other members accountable, have any? Outstanding job, agreed.
I'm curious if those members who, whose terms are up, are they interested in continuing as ad hoc members? Would they be willing to, you know, if there's a project, come back or would we need to then search for? People to come and be a part of that ad hoc committee?
We, we believe that there's two that are just at the point in their lives that they don't want to continue, things going on. Other ventures they have done, one, we're trying to talk into. But we did get, did receive some applications when we did first put this out, so now maybe we'll find some in the community that could fit in that third role. It will point to future members. I, I would suggest that council continues to, to, to appoint and recommend. I'm just, yeah.
They actually specify that we really need a security person.
That would, that would complement the current crew, nice to have someone with security.
The security person.
IT security.
That would be one of the things that they would recommend.
It sounds like everyone's open to it. Corbin, what would we need to do?
Oh, we'll have to, I think this is a, was established by resolution. Now that it's an ordinance, so I think we could just have a resolution for the future meeting. To the extent that it's important, which I'm not submitting in the code that specifically set it up. If it's an ordinance, we have to advertise etc. But if it's a resolution, which I think it was, we should be able to take care of it so that it's secure. Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what we said. That would just limit the number of people to three, to make sure that the, the terms are, are fitting to the. You know, three-year terms or something along those. We'll, we'll work it through, it's kind of like the update that we made. To the personnel, yeah, but that's, that is an order, that was one, says in the code. Tech committee is.
Yeah, it does look like it was created by resolution five of two thousand nineteen.
Very good. Proceed with that. That comes up next one. Next up, another housekeeping thing, Brian, do you want to? This normal stuff for us to destroy public records.
Oh, yes, there's a certain set of standards that, that by the state for how we destroy any public records after so many years. There's different rules for different departments, different pieces of. Historical data. For instance, there are certain things that we can never destroy and we always have to keep, but there are certain things that are financial records going back seven plus years that need to. Be properly disposed of.
And we just get a company that treads them.
Yes, they come.
Okay, any questions, Brian, before we? No, okay, floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution number six of the twenty twenty-three series. Declaring the town's intent to destroy public records in accordance with the schedules and procedures for disposition of records. As set forth in the municipal records manual approved on July sixteen nineteen ninety-three and as amended.
Okay, everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Next up is just housekeeping for us to accept the Mortons' contract, correct?
Correct, questions together? No, just correct, we're, we took with the cog and. The lowest bidder was Morton's.
Questions? Okay, floor is open for motion, Dr. Rappa.
Bush to approve Mortons' council of government's soft contract.
Second, second. Uh, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carriers. Next up, a new EAC member, that's for Casey, you have the recommendation.
Yes, so we'll let you do the. I would like to make a motion to appoint Ryan Schell as a member of the environmental advisory committee with an unexpired term. Until eight thirty-one twenty-four.
So, second.
Dr. Rapp. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. And last is just that housekeeping. For the EAC, Jack, did you want to?
Sure, do that one. Motion to accept the resignation of David Menard from the environmental advisory committee effective immediately.
Second. Second.
Everyone, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would just like to thank Dave Menard. There's outstanding work he did with the environmental advisory committee, a little pickup, working with scouts. Mr. Case, I'm sure you want to say something differently.
I was just gonna say, he has a heart of gold, but he is Mr. Trash. He not only put on all the trash programs twice a year. But he relentlessly went around the town picking up, cleaning up, notifying us of anything that needed to be corrected. And so his, his efforts went a long way to keep our town clean.
Yeah. Okay.
Indeed. Last thing on the item, any general public comments, and if you're, pop up to the microphone, name and address, you have five minutes. We have a taker.
Paul Heckman, one oh five two nine Abbey Lane. First item is, I'd like to thank the town for putting the little emblems by the storm. Sores on Forest Oaks Drive, I noticed them during our walk about where's this water go and. Don't be dumping things down here, and I'm wondering as a private community. If those are available and advisable for us to put up by our several, several. Trains that people might think about going out, dumping things in without thinking about where they go. Uh, that was, was very impressive to see those going around. Because it's, it's so easy to have a bucket of something and go, yeah, just. Pass it out there. Second question I have, and this is, was sort of covered by the stores things, but as a private community and having one fire hydrant. I don't want to do anything that slows down service to my thirty-five homes. Will the private communities be notified that? They need to do this to be in compliance with the ordinance?
We can have you and Jeff get together after the meeting and he could probably give you all that.
The stores, uh, stores.
Yes.
Ordinance, it's only, it, it doesn't. It's, that's what I, I hate to use the term grandfathering, but that hydrant is fine. Until it needs, if it needs major repairs or replaced, then it has to come with compliance.
Okay, so for new, new construction, definitely, and then if there was a major repair to a private hydrant. Would have to be updated as that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Name and address.
Um, yes, Ellen Wright, nine six three five Old Coomer Road, Allison Park, PA one five one oh one. And hello, Mrs. Eisner.
Eisenreich.
Eisenreich, thank you, Mr. Casey. Mr. Tarl, Mr. O'Malley, Mr. Corbin, Dr. Rappa and Miss Clu, Miss Clu, Miss Clu. So, um, that Tom Hanks movie when they're on the way to the moon and they, and they don't run out of oxygen, I love that movie, have you seen that movie? And it's a great movie, so they're, they run out, there, something's wrong with the oxygen, so admission control, they. Pull out all these things and they say, hey, look, this is the, what they have on board and you have to figure out. How to get them oxygen so that they can get back, they're not going to the moon anymore. And they pull out all these miscellaneous things and the end of the movie, they figured it out and they have a way to get back from the moon. So, um, when I think of the proposal for the zoning code. I think of all the, I think it's sort of like having all those different things on the table. And we have to figure out how to get back from the moon because we're running out of oxygen. The zoning code just does not feel solid to me, it feels haphazard. And, um. So I'm curious, how many of you have actually seen the comments that came back from the county about the zoning code?
That's right, this is just comments, so.
Okay, alright, my fault, so, alright, so I would. Let, hopefully that you would have seen the comments that came back from the county about the zoning code. Related to the zoning code itself, the county had. Thirty-three comments and related to the subdivision and land use ordinance, SADO. They had sixteen comments. Comments for the subdivision and land use ordinance SADO included asking if the. Some of the definitions were verbatim from the municipal planning code, in which they highly recommended. On the zoning comments. Number eight, they had some question, they had under article thirteen oh two point one with respect to the establishment of zoning districts. We recommend that the zoning districts be evaluated in conjunction with the municipality's comprehensive plan. Number nine, under the zoning, they said under subsection one ten and zoning district hierarchy. The reasoning behind the hierarchy is not clear. For example, it states that it represents a progression from the most restrictive, restrictive to least respective, restrictive. If each zoning district has specific regulations, it is not clear what the purpose is behind the hierarchy in this section. This should be clarified, so the county had some comments related to both the zoning and the SADO. And it seems that it would make sense for McCandless to address these. And completely before approving a zoning, new zoning. Ordinance and map and a new subdivision and land use. Ordinance, because it, I understand there's been expense upfront to get us this far. But to do it right and have it done right, so that it doesn't cost the town more later on. Because things were not addressed upfront, so that's my comment for today. And I highly recommend the movie On a Rainy Day That We're Having, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Green. Are there any other public comments? Sir, name and address.
Orange, two zero nine Eighty West Drive. I'd just like to say thank you for the addition of the pickleball courts in the recreational area just behind us. I know, you know, my friends, peers, me and many others really like it, but I'd also like to say, or sort of make a request. To my friends, peers and I, go to the volleyball courts or pickleball courts or basketball courts, and we tend to go in the evening. And, you know, it does get dark out eventually. And, you know, we're playing and then we realize, you know, it's dark and probably shouldn't be playing anymore. So I just like my, a request to sort of say that lights in that area would be a great addition. Yeah, that's for sure, thanks.
Thank you for your comments, we can. Hook you up with the guy that's in charge of that afterwards here. The lights guy.
Uncle Puri, two oh nine Eighty West Drive, Bexford, PA, I don't want to take up too much time because I know when meetings run late, you want to get out of here. Well, this is what happens with the ambulance authority. What, when there's time to get out in time one day, you don't want people holding you up, so. Again, a comment about the pickleball court, so pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America right now. Pickleball courts are in high demand, we've got multiple courts in the area, I appreciate the four courts we have. But one of the things that we run into and, and friends from the town that play. Is a lot of times, particularly in the evenings, we get here, the courts are often taken over by leagues. Fifteen, twenty people, even more coming together. And then taking up the course for hours on end and then just rotating through. What ends up happening with that is town members a lot of times are not able to get on court. It's the same thing, you know, we have eight courts in North Park, there's. It's the same thing, you know, we have eight courses in North Park. There's, uh, four. Here, there's a bunch of other course around and a lot of these high volume, uh. People end up taking up the courts and then clogging them up for hours of an end. One of the things that I've noticed in certain, uh, communities that they have done, I know Treesdale has that, Hingberry Park has that. There is an ability to block for town residents. To book course an hour at a time. And I wonder if the council, uh, would, uh, consider something like that for town residents to be able to make bookings. On these courts, uh, so that town residents will have some sort of priority in being at least able to get on course. That was it.
Give your comments. Anyone else? Here tonight? Okay. Saying no, meeting is adjourned.